6:30 and I'm calling us to order. As authorized by Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened into close executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of any business at any time prior to adjournment. So it's officially 6:30, we have a full dais, we have, we'll find out by the end if it's a full agenda or not. Sometimes I'm a bad guesser of how long the meetings are gonna last. But we are so lucky tonight. I'm so glad that you guys are here. I am gonna ask Lizeth Orona and Eduardo Garcia to come forward. Lizeth is in third grade and she is a member of the peer assisted leadership group, which they call PALS. And she's in third grade. And Eduardo is involved with the Green Team. Eduardo, you have to turn around so everyone can see your t-shirt. He's all about the Green Team. He knows all about recycling. Both of these, okay, you can turn back around, Eduardo. Both of the kids attend Lost Pines Elementary. And Eduardo has a little brother here and Lizeth has a little sister here. And they've assured me they are very nice to their little brother and little sister. So they are good big brother and big sister. They are gonna be leading us in both of the pledges. And Lizeth told me that she's a little bit nervous and a little bit excited. And I told her that's how I feel before these meetings too. So she was gonna be just fine. So if you'll please rise, we'll say they'll lead us in the pledges.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Okay, you guys have to do one more thing. You have to turn around because they're gonna take your picture. Oh, look at Shane. Okay, and they're gonna be on the city's Facebook and I already got their parents' permission, so it's all okay. And tonight, we are, okay, you guys can go back and sit with your parents. Thank you very much. And tonight Pastor Johnny Bond with the Bastrop Church of Christ is gonna lead us in our invocation. If you please remain standing. Johnny?
If you'll pray with me, please. Good evening, Heavenly Father. As we gather this evening to discuss business and planning for our city, we first approach you and offer our thanks and praise. We have weathered many difficult obstacles over the last few years with fire and flood. The resiliency that we learned from pulling together has served us well and has enabled us to band together to have a chance to benefit our city more and more in many ways and now through the Small Business Revolution. And we express thanks for the opportunity that this revolution provides to our city and our small business owners. As we seek to continue to develop civic and economic plans to keep pace with the growth of our area, Father, my prayers that we would remember that you offer us wisdom and favor to share with one another, that you shape community to ensure law and order, peace and protection. May we be good stewards of the opportunities that you are providing. I pray that our public discussions would be encouraging, seasoned with salt, light, and compassion for one another. May Bastrop continue to be a place where hope is harvested, where unity and creativity, faith, and wisdom empower our growth. Now, Lord, bless our city council, officials, and employees, and citizens, tonight and the coming days. In Christ, we live, move, and breathe. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Bond. I wish you would come to my house and do that every morning. It would be a really good way to start my day. Okay, we are on item 4A. We are going to be receiving a presentation from the Bastrop Police Department as required by law on the 2017 racial profile report submitted to the state of Texas Chief Adcock.
As you said a while ago, this is required by federal law that we're required once a year in February or March to the governing body to give our racial profile procedures. Now, next year, they're changing the racial profile the way it's reported, so I'm not sure how we're gonna do that. But this year, this is our numbers for this year. If y'all have any questions at any time, let me know. We had a total of 1,166 stops. 1,308 were citations, 45 were arrests. Arrest means handcuff, clicking, go-to-jail arrests, because citations are technically by law considered arrests. And 83 were both. Now, one thing that they're gonna change next year is they're gonna start including warnings. As of yet, all of these, all these years, warnings are not included in racial profiling, so this is only tickets or arrests. Somebody changing this? Oh, thank you.[358.12][358.12](Laughter) This is all new to all of us. This is the racial makeup of what we stopped. And in a minute, I'm gonna compare and I'm gonna show you what our city makeup is.
Is this just in the city limits?
This is just the City of Bastrop. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The city demographics is on the left of each column, the purple, blue, whatever color that is. And then, how many, our stop percentages is the orange. So you can see on whites, we stopped 63 percent, or we stopped 60 percent, and our racial makeup is 63 percent. Hispanic, 28, our racial makeup is 21. The reason for that, the City of Bastrop makeup of Hispanics is relatively low compared to the county. The county racial makeup is somewhere between 38 and 40 percent. Obviously, we all know that we service people other than just citizens of Bastrop. Blacks, 10 percent, and the racial makeup is 12. And then, the other ones are very small percentage. Race or ethnicity known prior to the stop. You ask why too. We may know the person. We may drive by and see the person when we get ready to stop them. So there is two times where we knew their race or ethnicity before the traffic stopped. A good example is if we're looking for a certain individual who we know has a warrant for him. Well, we obviously know who they are and what their racial makeup is. Search conducted 77 times. We conducted searches. Was the search consented? Eight is yes, 69 is no. That does not mean that we're violating their constitutional right. What that means is chances are, we arrested them, and so we do inventory the vehicle, and so that's a search incident to a lawful arrest. Or we have probable cause to search the vehicle. We smell marijuana. We see something in plain sight that gives us the right to search. Any questions? I did not, I've done this for 10 years. There's nothing, no red flags, in my opinion, on any of this. Everything looks, looks good.
Thank you, Chief Counsel. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item 4B, a proclamation of the city council of the City of Bastrop recognizing February 18th through the 24th as Engineers Week. So that's next week. Whereas engineers use their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to fulfill society's needs, and whereas engineers face the major technical challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disaster, cleaning up the environment, and assuring safe, clean, and efficient sources of energy, to designing information systems that will speed our country into the future, and whereas engineers are encouraging our young math and science students to realize the practical power of their knowledge, and whereas we will look more than ever to the engineers for their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the 21st century, now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby proclaim February 18th through the 24th as Engineers Week. In witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Bastrop, Texas to be affixed this 13th day of February. If you are an engineer in the audience, if you're staff, if you're on council, would you please stand up? If you're an engineer.[591.62][591.62](Applause) Yes, that was somewhat self-serving, but I love engineers.[604.12][604.12](Laughter) So I wanted to, I've given the proclamation to Mayor Pro Tem Schiff, and he'll be sharing that with Wesley Brandon. And there's a lot of, teachers are a very fulfilling career. There's a lot of this, whatever you do touches a lot of people. And engineers get, we get a lot of
They were supposed to do it a couple of years ago. It hasn't happened yet, but guidelines for how you maintain your designation as a cultural district. That hasn't happened yet, so we really don't know what you're gonna need to do in order to continue to be a cultural district. And eventually, there might be some money at the state level that's available. But at this point, there's really nothing that it does for you, except you get listed on their website. So what is the Bastrop Experience? It's made up of two things. One is your identity, and the other is what we call the experience vision, or your vision of what a visitor or resident might experience when they come here. And we put it together into a simple statement. Bastrop's 30 minutes and a world away from Austin. This is not a tagline. This is not a brand. This is not a marketing campaign. It's the core of who you are as a community. It's why people live here, and it's why people visit. And when we presented it to the BA IPP Board, to Main Street Board, Visit Bastrop Board, everyone liked it. They felt like it resonated with them, and they understood it. And they felt like it did represent how they felt about the community. So then, we had to create a vision statement that went along with that identity. And it's a vision for what visitors and residents will experience in Bastrop. And it's built upon who you are in a way that'll increase tourism and enhance quality of life. And that's really important, because you don't want to increase tourism and diminish the quality of life for your residents. And that happens in a lot of communities. They get so onboard the tourism train that one day they wake up and their community is not what it used to be, and they're not happy with what's happened. So by being proactive and continuing to pay attention to that quality of life component, you'll be more successful for both your residents and your visitors. Now, some of the things in this vision exist now. Some of them need to be created or are enhancements of your existing assets. Now, this isn't everything Bastrop offers, but it's the way that you want people to think of Bastrop. It's the feeling and the essence of spending time in Bastrop. Bastrop is a hearty family breakfast in a bustling café. Bastrop is browsing through eclectic shops on a historic Main Street where owners learn your name and invite you to come back. Bastrop is a relaxing day on the Colorado, followed by a wine tasting or a stop at the distillery, and your choice of live music venues, each small enough to feel like you Bastrop is a farm-to-table cooking class or a day-long workshop exploring improv or Bastrop is evenings where the temperatures cool just a bit, and you join others playing life-size board games, or step up and perform at open mic night on the porch. Bastrop feels like home, and you can't wait to come back. That's the vision for the Bastrop Experience, and it's what you're working toward. But achieving that vision doesn't happen overnight. It's a journey. And what does that journey look like moving forward? Is this just gonna be another plan on the shelf where nothing happens? No. This is a short-term plan that's going to help you strengthen the Bastrop Experience. It could, well, it's a formatting issue, I guess. Okay, there's nine recommendations, and in the plan on your, oops. In the plan on your table, if you go to page 24, there's a list of the recommendations.
Vicki, it's also on page 76 of the packet for people at home and if counsel's
76 in the packet or 24 of the plan document that you've got on there. It's a list of nine recommendations, all of which contain individual actions. Most of these actions could be started today. And they're inexpensive, easy to implement, and they will start to enhance and broaden a lot of times, things that already exist, events that exist or opportunities that exist. There will be longer-term recommendations included in your cultural arts master plan that's currently under development. This is intended to be a short-term, basically idea trope. We want to help you get things started today. And it doesn't, nobody in particular has to take the lead on this. Individuals, individual groups, it's not up to the city or anybody else to totally take the lead on it. There's a lot of ideas in here that people can do just on their own. But they are things that can start to build momentum and allow people to see things happen, because we know that when people see things happening, they wanna get involved, right? They want, they don't wanna be the first ones, but once they see things happening, they want to be a part of making it move forward. And doing these things will help to strengthen Bastrop's story when you star in season three of the Small Business Revolution. So that's how you begin to create the Bastrop Experience. And these recommendations, recommendations are all built upon Bastrop's culinary, cultural, and other assets to support your identity and to enhance what you offer, to help you get closer to achieving that vision of what both residents and visitors can experience in Bastrop. With that, questions?
Counsel, any questions? Councilmember Ennis?
My question was, and I just wanna make this clear, you're recommending that we dissolve both districts and basically put the efforts under the DMO, or work in conjunction with the DMO individuals working? How are these efforts, in your mind, gonna be driven?
That's an excellent question. Okay, I strongly suggest that you dissolve the culinary district, because there's no interest in actually making things move forward from the restaurants. I mean, they just, they don't have the time, they don't have the energy or the money or the staff. And so having it sit out there is just a reminder that they're not doing anything. So definitely that one. The cultural district, basically, you need to probably mothball it for now, because there's nobody taking the lead on the efforts. And until you have your master plan, it's not gonna be worth anybody's time to actually to champion that. We do have some recommendations on how you can move forward, but I don't know, one of the recommendations in the plan is to look at a cultural office of some type within the city government that would incorporate BA IPP and a variety of other aspects that would work on events and kind of be that coordinating piece. Now, whether that's the best format or not, I think is probably part of what's gonna happen in the master plan development, and is also subject to funding. Figuring out a way to do this that is fiscally appropriate for Bastrop over the next couple of years. You have an awesome amount of assets. They just aren't being utilized and coordinated together in a way that benefits you and strengthens your visitation. These things in this plan will help to start strengthen that, but it's gonna take the longer-term, broader master plan to really put concrete, a concrete foundation underneath that.
Thank you.
Counsel, anyone, anyone else have any questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, if you're in the audience or at home, we're moving on to page two. I'm on item 4D, a proclamation of the city council of the City of Bastrop, Texas recognizing the month of February as Black History Month. Sorry, I have a proclamation here. Whereas the origins of the Black History Month can be traced to the scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who created the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History in 1915, because African-Americans have played a central role, central role in our nation's history, but for too long, historians ignored or glossed over their contributions and the injustices they have suffered. And whereas in 1926, Dr. Woodson conceived a yearly celebration to help rectify the omission of African-Americans from history books and was made official by presidential designation in 1976. And whereas today, the observance of Black History Month throughout the United States stands as a testament to the success of Woodson's project and an example of how we can work together to make the teaching of history more honest. And whereas the theme of 2018 Black History Month is African-Americans in times of war and marks the 100th anniversary of World War I armistice, serving as a sole solemn reminder of the bonds of patriotism. And whereas President Donald J. Trump stated in his February 2018 proclamation that for far too long, African-Americans bravely fought and died in the name of freedom while at the same time struggling to attain equality, respect, and the full privileges of citizenship. And whereas African-Americans have served in all of America's wars, from the American Revolution to present day. During World War II, more than 2.5 million black men registered for the draft and experienced discrimination and segregation, yet served in every branch of the armed forces. 167,000 served in the Navy with the first 13 African-American naval officers commissioned in 1944. 17,000 served in the Marine Corps with the first African-American commissioned in 1945. 5,000 served in the Coast Guard with the first African-American commissioned in 1943. And 909,000 served in the Army. And whereas more than 12,000 black men who served in the segregated 92nd Division received citations or were decorated for extraordinary heroism on the battlefield. Perhaps most famously, the Tuskegee Airmen also became legendary for their heroic feats and in total received a distinguished unit citation, several silver stars, 150 distinguished flying crosses, 14 bronze stars, and 744 air medals. Whereas World War II was a watershed for race relations within the armed forces, and it marked the beginning of the end for racial separation within military units. In 1948, with the demand for civil rights mounting, President Harry S. Truman ordered desegregation of the armed services and equality of a treatment and opportunity without regard to race, color, religion, or national origin. Whereas reform was slow, and it was not until 1953 that segregation officially ended when the Secretary of Defense announced that the last all-black unit had been abolished. And whereas 40 years after military segregation ended, the Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff, the highest military position in the Department of Defense, oversaw Operation Desert Storm in Iraq. He was an African-American named Colin Powell. Now therefore, I Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize the month of February 2018 as Black History Month. And along with the members of city council, encourage all residents, business owners, schools, churches, and visitors to join the City of Bastrop in celebrating Black History Month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. In witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and caused the official seal of the City of Bastrop, Texas to be affixed this 13th day of February. If you served in the military, I want to especially recognize Councilmember Peterson. If you've served in the military at all, if you would please rise. And Councilmember Peterson has agreed to accept this proclamation. He tried to get some of his buddies to come, and they, it's a tough cold night, isn't it, sir?
Thank you so much for your service.[1571.12][1571.12](Applause)
Okay, moving on, I have a few things before you click to the next page, okay? I'll let you know, Tracy. We're gonna talk about Small Business Revolution later, so I'm not gonna go over that much now. But there are two companies that I really want to think about Small Business Revolution, and I'm afraid I'll forget later. And that is Bastrop Signs and Sandra at the Cottage. They did above and beyond things to support us for the revolution. So if you'd join me in a round of applause, I'd really like to.[1613.52][1613.52](Applause) I have a couple of other things. You know that in January, I was all about It's Time Texas. I'm still all about It's Time Texas. I'm taking pictures of myself drinking water and doing all those things. And I am proud to report that we have 408,550 points. We have 290 registered users, and as a community, we've lost 131 pounds. That's like a person, you know? So I'm pretty proud of that. We're third in the small group, but it's our very first year to really be dedicated to it. And just to put it in perspective, we're in good company. The city that's in first place is Lancaster, and they have over a million points, and they are beating everyone of all populations. So if you're gonna be third to somebody, it might as well be the rock star of the whole thing. A couple of other things that I wanted to bring to the community's attention. You may recall that back several months ago, council approved the use of some community support to buy some AEDs. And we, council received notice that on January 27th, one of those AEDs was used and two shocks were given before the ambulance could get there. So council, hats off to you for approving that funding, and there's nothing better to do with our community's support money than keep our citizens alive. So I'm really proud of that. We don't talk about our municipal court very much, but I wanted to recognize two different people. Ms. Espinoza has successfully completed her Level One Court Clerk certification. And from reading about that, that is an extremely difficult certification to get, especially when you're working full-time. So I know she's not here tonight, but I'm giving her a shout-out if you would join me with a round of applause for her.[1731.45][1731.45](Applause) And there was something else in the operational report that caught my eye, and that was, I really wanna give kudos to Kim Walters. She's the court administrator. She is the glue. She is the rock. She really makes our municipal court function. And one of her coworkers wrote in and put in writing, so think about the effort, because most of us are like, oh yeah, I should do that, but you never do. Someone wrote down that Kim makes the atmosphere in the municipal court joyful. And I just don't know many people who can say, I have a joyful work atmosphere and I get to work with a joyful person all the time. Of course, present company accepted, because it's a joy to work with you, for sure. We usually do better with a little more sleep, but, so I just, our municipal court is, they're the kind of thing that could be causing us all kinds of trouble if it wasn't running well, and we don't really talk about them very much, and it's because they do such an excellent, excellent job. So I just really wanted to give them some kudos. So I just really wanted to give them some kudos. Okay, Tracy, we can go to the next one. Several of you, some of you on this dais ask if I fell off the face of the earth. The last time we met, it was January 23rd and on January 24th, the first man and I hooked up the RV and took off for the Georgia coast because my husband had said to me, are we ever going to leave town again? And so I assured him that we would. The Brunswick Rockin' Stew-Bee, I was sad that Sarah O'Brien was not with me. It was one of those things where we were going down the street, we saw the roadblocks and it was their annual stew-blee. And Brunswick stew, as we were told, is a little different and it was a little different. And we got to taste 20 different, little different stews, but had a great time. For Frederica, those of you who know my husband, you know that he was not going to walk by a man with a gun without checking out the gun. And we also went to the St. Simon Island Lighthouse and yes, we climbed to the top and yes, I reported it on It's Time Texas so I could get credit for climbing the stairs to the top of the lighthouse. We were gone from January 24th to February 2nd. So if you had an event and I didn't make it during that time, I apologize. But I had not RSVP'd, so it's not like I told you I was going and I didn't show up. I just kind of tried to sneak away for a little bit. And when I was sneaking away, as we were driving to the Georgia coast, I asked my husband, how far away is Americas from Brunswick? And my sweet husband said, Connie, it's Georgia. How far away can it be? So I emailed Mayor Blount. Some of you may or may not know that Americas, Georgia was also a top 10 town for the Small Business Revolution. So I emailed Mayor Blount and said, hey, we're going to be in the area, blah, blah, blah. And immediately he responded and said, we would love to see you stop on by. So you, it's everything you can imagine. Here we are, driving a one-ton duly, pulling the RV, we pull into a parking lot, here came the news crew. They were so gracious and so sweet. I've shared some of the Americas coffee with some folks and I want to tell you, Patrick Kay is the person on the bottom to the far right, he is Sarah O'Brien, except his name is Patrick Kay. And it is such a small world. When Sarah left Nacogdoches and came to us in Bastrop, Patrick applied for the job in Nacogdoches. So apparently all the Main Street people, it's a very small world and they all know each other. So it was such a pleasure to visit with him. They were very gracious, we had a great lunch, and I want to tell you that they did not make it to the top five. But within 15 minutes, Mayor Blount emailed me and said, congratulations, we're pulling for you. And his wife Tammy emailed me and said, I just voted for you and I'm getting everybody in my company to vote for you. And I think that's part of the power of small towns and communities working together. So we really, really had a great time. And then, this was, the way we're turning things in on February, February, I had to turn my report in on February 2nd. So these are the things I thought I was going to do from when I got home to here, but we didn't get home on February 5th. We came flying home on February 2nd in time for me to go to the First Friday Art Walk. Then on Saturday night, we went to the E-flat Porch Band and Dinner, which was just a great event at the Opera House. And if you haven't been to one of the Opera House events lately, you really need to add that to your list. We, we had a really great time. Then on February 5th, I went to the We Believe in D I S D at a meal and had a great time with those teachers. And then on February 6th, we got up at 5:00 in the morning and caught a plane and three of us went to the Entertainment Experience Evolution Conference and took about an inch and a half worth of notes. And I'll be happy to visit with you, but I won't go over my inch and a half worth of notes at this time. We flew back, so we flew out Tuesday morning, we flew back Thursday and I, we got back from the airport and I went straight to Southern Edge and made the ribbon cutting. So I was, I was glad I was able to get that worked in. Went to the Meat Eaten Greet at Texas Boot Company and saw some of the legends, Colt McCoy and, thank you, I've slept since then, Jordan Shipley and Kwan Cosby, they were just really great guys and had a really good time. And I know the city manager might mention some of her favorite barbecue was there that night. Then on the 12th, we were at Bastrop County Commissioners Court. You may have seen some of that on Facebook. We had, the city had two items that we were interested there. And last night, we, several of us were at the YMCA Annual Fundraiser, which was a ton of fun. And this morning, we'll talk about making the top five and how excited we were. And this afternoon, about 11 o'clock, I was at the Safe Ribbon Cutting and that is a phenomenal organization with Pastor Nava and the five houses were open for the family shelters. So I'm tired. So on the next page, you will see that tomorrow, for all of you gentlemen, it's Valentine's, it's Valentine's, just, I'm saying it's Valentine's. Tomorrow is also day two of day seven to vote and we'll talk with you some more about voting, but if you haven't voted yet today, you will not offend me at all. Please get out your phone and vote. And if you've already voted today, please remember to vote not only tomorrow, but every day through the 20th. On Thursday, I'll be going to a coffee chat with our interim superintendent in the morning and then we have two joint council meetings that evening. Friday night is the Chamber Banquet. Saturday night, I was so honored to be asked to be the guest speaker for the ROTC banquet, so I'll be doing that. It's my understanding as of a few hours ago that we will be featured on Good Day Austin on the 19th, so I'll be busy that morning doing that. Tuesday, the 20th, we have a special drainage workshop and got a couple of meetings on the, the federal quarterly community meeting, a Bastrop County Cares meeting. Go to the Empty Bowl Project. That is such a phenomenal event that occurs every year. It will be at the Convention Center this year, so don't show up at the high school like you have in past years. It'll be at the Convention Center. And then on the 27th, and we're, we're going to talk about this later as well, 27th is two weeks from today. It is a city council meeting, but it is also going to be the watch party for finding out which of the five towns that have made it to the, to the final five, which one is the winner. So we're going to have to make some adjustment to our city council. And with that, that's what I've done since January 23rd. Councilmember Jones, do you have anything?
I took up the slack for you and I went to the Green Expo in Smithville.
Thank you.
And on Saturday, so they did a good job.
Thank you. Councilmember Ennis?
Well, we missed you, Mayor. I, my, I'm going to, I attended some of the things that the mayor attended after she got back, but one I would particularly like to mention is a joint meeting between the LaGrange Main Street Organization and Bastrop's Main Street Organization. It was an outstanding day of workshop, exploring what our city does, what LaGrange does and, and what we do well and questions were fielded from both organizations. It was, it was really a worthwhile event and I hope we will do it again, Sarah. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ennis. Mayor Protem Schiff?
Nothing from me.
Councilmember Nelson?
I'm worn out just listening to what you did.
That was vacation. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, Mayor, just briefly, I truly want to thank you for doing the proclamation for Black History Month and honoring our veterans. So thank you very, very much. And I want everyone to, I hope everyone keep Black History Month in your thoughts. And remember, not only the black veterans, but all veterans. Keep the veterans in mind because they, they really do a tremendous job of keeping our freedom. So I want to kind of throw out some kudos for those guys. But when it comes down to Black History Month, we've, we've come a long way, but we still have a long way to go. So I'll keep that kind of close to my heart. But Happy Valentine's Day and I hope everyone stays healthy and safe through these winter months because it's been a tough one. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, and thank you again so much for your service and for all of the veterans service. City Manager. Nothing from the City Manager. We're moving on to 5A. Speaking of flu and staying healthy, Sean Kirkpatrick, our Executive Director of our Economic Development Corporation, has the flu and he has been banned from any city building until he is free from fever for 48 hours, not 24, but 48 hours, because we cannot afford to be sick. So he's not with us tonight, but it is because he was remanded to home, so.
In all cap letters via text.
Yes. We yelled at, she yelled at him over text, you must stay home. All right, I'm on item 5A. Discuss the findings of the Retail Coach study of the impact on Bastrop sales tax revenue of the mixed-use development set for construction at South State Highway 71 and State Highway 130. Ms. Umble.
Mayor and Council, I'm certainly not going to do as good a job as Sean would do, but I think it's important that we get this information out. And if you have questions that the mayor and I cannot answer, then we'll certainly put this back on the agenda. But back in October, the Economic Development Corporation hired the Retail Coach to come in and do a retail economic development plan with the 500,000 square foot mixed-use development at State Highway 71 and 130 in mind. And so that was the, the reason that this study was conducted. So relative to the outlook for 2017, 2018, the mayor indicated that on the 6th, 7th, and 8th, Sean, the mayor, and I went to California and attended the Fourth Annual Entertainment Experience Evolution. And the mayor was exactly correct in the sense that we did take about an inch and a half of notes. This was a very exciting conference in the sense that each one of the sessions was about an hour, hour and 15 minutes long. There were five or six people on each panel and every one of the five or six were heavyweights in their industry. The mayor sat next to the gentleman that had created the Rainforest Cafe. The developer that's redoing the underground, that's 249,000 square feet was present, talking about what they're doing that's very cutting-edge relative to retail. It was a great use of our time because 41% of our general fund is made up of sales tax. And there are a lot of things impacting retail. One of the biggest that you hear is Amazon is going to eliminate brick-and-mortar retail. Online sales are growing at an annual rate of 10% a year. What was interesting in the presentation, and it was something that I had really never thought about, is there's always that one something that impacts retail. More than 100 years ago, it was large plate glass. Once large plate glass became popular, you had storefronts and that created Main Street as we know it. The next thing that happened was the United States Mail Service and that allowed retailers to have catalogs. You no longer had to be in the community to order shoes or clothing from the Sears and Roebuck catalog. And that really changed retail as we knew it. Well, the creation of air conditioning, escalators, and elevators created the multi-story downtown department store. And then came automobile, that created the mall. Well, shortly after that, we encountered radio identification, RF, radio frequency identification that was the barcode. That allowed big box retail to exist with regional distribution centers. Just like the internet has impacted e-commerce and impacted retail. So it's not really Amazon, the thing was e-commerce on internet. So the thing that's going to be impacting retail in the future is virtual reality. And how will that change the experience for the consumer? So all of that to say is retail's been around for 100-plus years. It's not going anywhere, but how we interact with retail will change. So as I said, 90% of all US sales will still occur in a brick-and-mortar site because as individuals, we like that experience. One of the things that the industry as a whole is wrestling with is why are some chains doing well and some aren't? And, and really, it was interesting because the mayor and I would sit and observe the room. And there were those that are cutting out edge that were out there doing it and those that were fighting it would sit there and roll their eyes when the speakers would talk and go, yeah, right, yeah, right. But the ones that were getting it done are creating that experience for the millennials and the ones that are seeing declines lack the experience or the experiential encounter that retailers are looking at. And that's why they indicated that some of the stores were closing when others were opening and taking their place. The National Restaurant Association projects that restaurant industry sales will reach $798 billion in 2017, a 4.3% gain over 2016. The one thing that developers stress time and time and time again is food and beverage is a part of that experience. It's no longer going to be optional. In fact, they talked about museums were now offering beer and appetizers as a part of their program because people, if they're going to stay for any length of time, are going to want something to drink and they're going to want something to eat. So 40% of the retail growth is restaurant sector and we came to understand that's not going to change any, anytime soon. You're seeing that the restaurant spending is overtaking the grocery spending because one of the things we spent a lot of time learning about was millennial behavior. And millennials like to eat out, but they want to eat out at home. So what you're seeing is a lot of the restaurants are having to have a full-service takeout because they want the experience in the restaurant, but they're going to have it at home. So it's redefining how people are allocating their grocery spending and interacting with the restaurant community. One of the things that you are seeing is even though you hear Target's not expanding, they are expanding, Costco is expanding, but they have a smaller product. What we came to understand is big box retail is not going away, but it probably won't be as big a box as you've seen in the past. So these are some of the stores that were highlighted in 2017. These are planned store openings over the next two years. So some of the brands are doing particularly well, some that aren't. They indicated really was chalked up to the fact that they are not providing the customer service or the merchandise that their customers are wanting. They didn't change with the times quick enough, but these are the planned store openings that these big retailers are looking at in the next coming years. So one of the things that's important in this conversation relative to the impact of the 500,000 square feet at 71 and 130 is the retail trade area. And that really is the geographic area from which a community's retailer derive a majority, defined as 85% of their business. Well, the City of Bastrop is phenomenally blessed in the sense that we have an extraordinarily large retail trade area for our particular area. All that you see in yellow here is 190 square miles. The population of that trade area today is about 193,000. It's projected to be just under 210,000 in 2022. The average household income this year of that trade area is right at about $72,570. So you can see from this demographic trend that we are experiencing an increase in the population of our 190-mile retail trade area. You can also see from the chart that the average household income is increasing as well. So that's very positive to us and speaks to the reason the development at 71 and 130 is likely to be very successful because there are obviously opportunities in our trade area to do that. One of the resources that the Retail Coach provides to the Economic Development Corporation is community marketing. They go in and help package our feasibility study. They go in and help package our feasibility study to individual businesses that we have an interest in and put together site profiles, retail-specific packaging, so that when Shawn and Jean go on recruitment trips, they're walking into that business with the information that they need specifically relative to Bassdrop to understand what we provide them in the way of marketing. And part of what is important is not only to recruit retailers, but the developers that package and market those retailers as well. And so the Retail Coach is a conduit to that because they were the first national retail real estate advisory firm to introduce retail recruitment to communities. And if you know anything about retail, it, the level of specificity of that business is pretty phenomenal. So this advisory firm provides us that information. One of the things that's also important is to be seen and represented. And the Retail Coach does a number of the big international conference of shopping centers in Las Vegas, Retail Live here in Austin, and then the International Conference of Shopping Centers also does a Texas conference in Dallas called their Deal-Making. So the really important aspect of retail recruitment, it's process. It's not an event. You have to go and visit, continually educate, and help educate all of these retailers about the market that Bassdrop has as we evolve and change. So one of the things that I think is important to talk about is the challenge that we have with the development going in at State Highway 71 and 130. And you can see the area right here in yellow. That is what the Retail Coach has determined is likely to no longer come to Bassdrop, but to go to the half-million-square-feet development at 130 and 71. And it is known as the Velocity Crossing. There is a tremendous interest on the part of the Austin mayor. You've heard Shawn talk on a couple of occasions about the fact that there's a food desert between Bassdrop and well into Austin. And so you see HEB has an interest in a site here. So there is an opportunity for all sorts of retail development to occur. And some of this, I don't have the details on, so I will spare you attempting to act like I do. The retail sales at the last council meeting, Shawn has gone in and analyzed our 41% revenue from sales tax and has divided it into these districts. And what you can see is the Burleson Crossing accounts for just under 19%. Hunter's Crossing is about 12%. So we're fortunate in the sense that we don't have all of our eggs in one basket, but they are distributed throughout the community. Again, the top five sales tax districts account for 67.8% of our market, and that's Burleson Crossing, the retail around Walmart, the intersection at 71 and 95, and Hunter's Crossing. So just to help with perspective of what we have budgeted relative to sales tax, the city of Bassdrop gets about 4.3 million. The Economic Development Corporation gets about 2.1 million, and Bassdrop County sees that as well. And so essentially, what that is important about this development is this. The Retail Coach believes that within five years of the development opening, that the city of Bassdrop will see a $1.8 million reduction in our sales tax. That translates to about $927,000 for BEDC. That $1.8 million reduction equates to about 21 cents in property tax. So for those that are wondering why the Small Business Revolution is a god moment for us, it really is. We've got to offset that $1.8 million sales tax reduction to maintain the standard of revenue that we have today so we can grow. And one of the things that our comprehensive plan talks about is tourism is one of the purest forms of economic development because they come, they put their hand in their pocket, they spend their money, and then they go home. And that is a wonderful way for us to capture that sales tax as we grow on a very managed growth way to diversify our sales tax into more of a property tax. So knowing that we have that deficit sitting out there, we're doing a multitude of things. One, clearly, we'd love to win the Small Business Revolution and get the national exposure. The other thing that was so profoundly important about going to California was listening to the gentleman that is developing the underground, the 249,000-square-feet underneath the city of Atlanta. The important point of that underground is it intersects where Interstate 84, 94, and Interstate 20 come together in Atlanta. So the daily vehicular numbers are off the chart. Anybody could be there. And he publicly says he has made a conscious effort to ban chain restaurants and chain retail from going underneath the underground. What he wants is small mom-and-pop retail stores and unique restaurants because that's the experience that the millennials are looking for, are willing to pay for, even if it means they don't have money in the bank. So for us, having a strong Main Street with strong small business that can survive, can thrive, it won't matter what's at State Highway 130 and 71 because they won't be able to compete with the unique Bassdrop experience. So for us, that's really important for the Small Business Revolution. There are opportunities for us to enhance our retail experience. We see that there is a window for that to occur before the development at State Highway 130 and 71 actually starts leasing. And this is a retailer targeting list that the Retail Coach has indicated the demographics work for Bassdrop. Now, there's a big difference than taking this list and going and recruiting them because, you know, nuances matter depending on who makes that decision. But this is the retail targeting list that they have indicated to us works for us. They will be working with Shawn to put together, again, that feasibility study so we can go and actively recruit those particular businesses. So that in a nutshell is the sales tax presentation that we wanted to present to you this evening so that you understood. You've heard me speak of that $1.8 million deficit. Now you understand that it came from this fiscal analysis with people that are certainly in the know, and we have a sense of purpose and urgency about overcoming this challenge. So at that point in time, I'll be quiet and give you an opportunity to ask any questions that you may have relative to this.
Another thing that's important to know is that that's a list that the Retail Coach made. That doesn't mean those people want to come, and quite frankly, and quite brutally, it doesn't mean we want them. And but what we do want to always maintain is our Bassdrop uniqueness. And we don't want to look like every, any other town that's up and down I-35. So I know that that information's in the packet, but please spare me the emails tomorrow that you hate the, you know, you don't like 10 of the restaurants and please don't get them. It's just a list. And one of the things that we were also exposed to in California is there is, just like any other discipline, there are people who are really good at what they do, and there are people who just do what they do. And we have something, we have value, we want to maintain that value, and we're open for business, but we're open for business with the right person, with the right deal. And I don't want anyone to think that it's the carte blanche, we're just rolling over for anybody. I don't want, we're in a situation that we want to take control of, and that's why we're talking about something. And it's a forecast. They may be overestimating, they may be underestimating, but ignoring it is not a path forward. But so that's the sense of urgency, but we all know about predicting numbers, especially in an economic sense. I think there was a president that said he was looking for a one-handed economist because economists always say, "On the one hand, but on the other hand," because there's always two sides to that. So, Council, any comments that you, Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yeah, I would just add a little bit of history here, and that is that the Retail Coach was retained by BEDC years ago, before Buc-E's, before Burleson Crossing, and that the marketing data and the demographic data that they have in these reports is really invaluable to bringing in those types of developments. You know, this, the reports that the Retail Coach put forth way back when were updated on an annual basis. And when the Buc-E's came in and when the Burleson, we just handed them a report, and it was huge to see that Bassdrop has this. At the time, I think it was a, they estimated 178,000 people in the market area, which really boggled our minds. But it was really key to bringing these developer, the developments in, the businesses, the retail, when they can see what their market really looks like. And the Retail Coach has the reputation with the folks you see on the list here and others of putting together good information. You know, it's independent from something that we would declare on ourselves. So it was, it was quite useful, and I'm very thankful that the Retail Coach has been retained on an ongoing basis to keep this information up to date and be able to use it, you know, going forward.
Counsel, any other comments? Okay, we get to talk about Small Business Revolution.
When we posted this item on the agenda, we didn't know whether or not we were going to win or not. So that's why it's listed the way it is. But at this point...
While she's doing that, if you have not voted, get your phone out and vote.
Okay, well, we were selected this morning to be in the top five. You can see the range of emotion from Sarah, the mayor, and I got there about 5:15. It was going to be announced about 6:30. Somewhere between 10 minutes after 6:00 and 6:20, the nerves kicked in. I looked at the mayor and I said, "I think I'm going to throw up." Sarah had been going to throw up, and about 10 minutes later, the mayor goes, "Oh, I'm pretty sure I'm going to throw up." So what you see on the bottom is the three of us praying we don't have to throw up and that our name is going to be called. But it's awesome to see the joy and the excitement that was caught. And for those that weren't present, there's a video that one of the television stations recorded that's on the city's website, and it's way cool. It was awesome, the energy, the experience. The television reporters have so bought into our story. They were so engaged in voting and are coming back on the 27th, and so it really was an electric experience. We owe a huge thank you to Neighbor's Kitchen and Yard. Tom Dickey and his team were awesome. They got up super early this morning. They made breakfast pizzas. We appreciate the coffee dog providing copious amounts of coffee that we needed at that stage of the, of the morning. So we get the announcement, and lo and behold, we got the news that we wanted. Alton, Illinois, Amesbury, Massachusetts, Bassdrop, Texas, Martinez, California, and Salem Springs, Arkansas are in the top five. So I'm going to... This is the promo video that Deluxe has now put out. When you go and have an opportunity to decide who you want to vote for, not that any of you need to decide, but for those that are in the country that are looking, this is the video they're going to show on Bassdrop.
So I've been in downtown revitalization for a long time, and Bassdrop is truly a unique community. We are located just 25 miles from Austin, close to San Antonio and the Houston marketplace, but really feel a world away from all of the big cities. We've got that small-town charm, southern hospitality, a great art scene, a lot of history, and of course, as you can see behind me, the beautiful Colorado River.
People remember us for, unfortunately, for the fire of 2011. That's when Bassdrop made national news. That's a, that's a problem for a city when it's associated with one of the largest wildfires in Texas. We lost over 1,500 homes, and people have the misunderstanding that the whole town burned. No. And not only did we not burn down, we've weathered four floods and a hurricane. We're open for business. Things are great and going well.
We've had to do it. You know, a lot of things have kind of come, come at us hard, and we want to be successful. People care about this community. They have a great sense of place, and so we have no other choice but to get it, pull up our sleeves, get our hands dirty, and keep on going.
The reason you want to vote for Bassdrop is because when you close your eyes and think about what a small town should be, it's Bassdrop. We can be the town my husband was born in, where the community knew each other and Main Street was live. Small Business Revolution talks about the tragedy of losing our downtowns, and we don't want that to happen. And we have everything in place to pull that together. And with their vote, we could win and have the thriving downtown that we need.
So the challenge that we have right now is we need everybody to vote. We need everybody you know to vote. We need everybody that you sort of like to vote. We need your relatives to vote. Did I mention we need you to vote? There were a million votes cast in season two, and Sarah has kind of done some math in her head and decided that probably somewhere around 3 million votes will be cast. And that's based on, excuse me, the difference in votes between season one and season two. And as this series becomes more popular and gains national attention, more people are engaged to vote. So everybody needs to vote today with all of the email addresses that you have, and vote every day until Tuesday, February 20th at 9:00 PM. Now, what we really need people to start doing is rather than hashtagging, we need to use the at sign. For those of us that are over 30, that is the each sign. It was each when I was growing up, but the at sign. And so what the Small Business Revolution is asking is that as we post things relative to Bassdrop voting or reposting, that we need to put @SmallBusinessRevolution, @DeluxeCorporation, or the hashtag, but their preference is at least the at sign. And that's very important because they are still tracking and looking at the social media experience, and we want them to appreciate... experience, and we want them to appreciate the level of commitment that we have. And if you've been following us on social media, you can understand that we will do just about anything to win. And so, not to be outdone, we have created a very interesting way to get you to vote. And if you're a country music fan, I want you to thank Connie Smith once a day.
When Bastrop was chosen by Deluxe, it was oh so good. Now we're in the final five. We're in it to win it good. The only town from the Lone Star State. Vote for us once a day for seven days. Once a day. Go to the website or go at night. You can't go wrong. Bastrop needs to win. The Small Business Revolution. Vote once a day, every day, all day long. Bastrop is going to need your votes more than just one time. Voting once a day for seven days would be so kind. You know we can do it. We're Texas strong. Vote for Bastrop every day, all day long. Once a day. Go to the website or go at night. You can't go wrong. Bastrop needs to win. The Small Business Revolution. Vote once a day, every day, all day long. Vote once a day, every day, all day long.
Can't imagine why Terry decided to not come to council meeting tonight.
We appreciate Terry Moore recording that. I don't remember how it came to Sarah, but somebody mentioned it. Sarah went to Terry, and next thing you know, we have a promotion, and we just love that. So we appreciate all of the creativity. One of the things that the Small Business Revolution requested of the top 10 was that whoever was in the top five would host a watch party. The watch party will be televised live via Facebook by the Small Business Revolution from each of the five cities. They gave us the date, and it's February 27th. That also is a council meeting day. Because we have public hearings that have to be advertised in the Bastrop advertiser and have to be advertised before we post, we posted three meeting times, 10 o'clock in the morning, 2:00 in the afternoon, or 6:30 in the evening. And so we posted three agenda items, and we will counsel two of the three. Today, we don't know what time it will be or where it will be held. We don't know what the parameters are that they will put on the five cities. So as soon as we know, we have a call scheduled with them later in the week, and we will be promoting that as soon as possible. So, one of the things that I think speaks volumes to the support that we have had in Bastrop is the power of social media. If you will remember a couple of council meetings ago when we first started talking about the Small Business Revolution, at that point in time, we really didn't have a presence on social media, and we were woefully behind on the number of viewers on the Small Business Revolution website. And so we issued a call to action to the community and to everybody that we could, and boy, did y'all respond. This is of yesterday at midnight. We ended the campaign going into the final five with 3,849 mentions on social media. The next city probably is at 1,100. We got them three to one. The most impressive piece to this is our social media reach as of yesterday was 2.1 million. The closest city behind us was 800,000. You know, what, what is so phenomenal about this is how everybody in the community has come together and done their part, whatever they thought their part needed to be. And one of the people that just makes me smile is Ann Beck. Ann is probably 81, I think, 80? Well, I think she's pretty public about it. But the, the great thing about Ann is, is that she was on Facebook, but she would just type. She didn't know how to hashtag. She didn't know how to post a picture. And rather than hide behind her age, and so many of us that are aging just say, "You know, that, that's technology I don't need," she made Sarah show her how to take a picture. And Ann took one of those frames, and Ann has taken pictures at the bank, Ann has taken pictures at the mechanics. She has stopped in at the dentist office. If Ann knew you, Ann took the frame, Ann took pictures, and Ann posted them on her website or her social media page and hashtagged the food out of it. I mean, it was #MyBastrop, #SmallBusinessRevolution, #MyTexas. And that just speaks to the passion that folks have in this community, and Ann, that was how she wanted to serve and how she wanted to help, and she wasn't going to let the lack of knowledge change that. The mayor indicated Sandra Grawinder. She was one that came to our committee meetings, and the first time she came in, she didn't know much about social media. She asked an awful lot of questions, and I sure am glad we took time to answer it, because she is the Kevin Bacon of Bastrop. I'm telling you, she knows somebody that knows somebody that knows somebody. And Sandra closed her business today to work that list, to get them engaged to vote. And I could go on and on and on. This coffee has walked and made sure that every business was involved, and if we had something to distribute, she was there, and she's filled the questions and facilitated, and it just, it is amazing, the support. The one thing that I heard this morning, excuse me, that I think is absolutely on point is this is probably the first thing in a decade that this community could rally around that wasn't a disaster. So we are having that family reunion without a funeral, and I think that is hugely important to kind of change the dynamics for us moving forward. So as I have kind of explained to people in my network, the social media part of this ended yesterday. We won round one, but round two's way bigger than this, and we have to literally engage a huge number of people to vote. We were told that Bristol-Battle got about 350,000 votes, and again, if it's growing exponentially, we feel like we need somewhere between 750,000 and a million. So we're working our list. We're thrilled that we have vendors that love Bastrop like we do. They're working their list. Had a developer today that said, "You know what? We're international, and we're working the international circuit to get them to vote for Bastrop." So we appreciate everybody's support, but it is going to be a job for the next seven days. I have literally blocked two or three hours off my calendar every day to get people to vote. Today was easy. Lots of press, everybody's excited, so everybody voted. Tomorrow, it will be a little less robust if we don't work the market. By Friday, people are going to be tired of hearing from us, and over the weekend, it will drop off because they're not going to be in front of their work computer. So it's imperative that we work, work, work to get those votes out. We're going to hear a, be, provided a ranking of votes on Thursday, on Friday, Saturday, and Monday. Now, I am mentally prepared for Deluxe to play games with the numbers. Not saying that they aren't going to tell the truth, but it's a contest, and if one city is number one all the way through, it's motivating for those that are falling behind. So not saying that they would lie, but I am understanding that they're running a, a campaign. So I'm mentally preparing myself for us to not be first all four days. But going in on Tuesday, we need to be at the top of that list. So again, vote, vote, go vote, and work your networks every day to get them to vote, because it's going to be sad on epic proportions if Lilo, Arkansas, and Lilo, Massachusetts beats the big old state of Texas. So considering we got lots of pride, I think we need to just show them how it's done in Texas, and let's just take this home. And then I guess, I don't know why it's not...
One comment that I would like to make is that several folks have been emailing us with like, "Have you thought about Colin so-and-so? Have you thought..." We've got list out the wazoo. If, in the time that you ask us if we've connected with them, we'd really rather you just go. If you know somebody, ask them. If they get asked by someone they know, they're more likely to do it. So very much appreciate the ideas, but feel free to move forward without double-checking. You don't need permission to ask somebody to vote.
No, in fact, it would be wonderful if that person got four or five people from Bastrop, then maybe they'd appreciate how important it is, because we really, really do. So as we've been saying for about the last two weeks, we're all in. So we've come this far, and I appreciate that everybody says we've won even if we don't win. I don't like losing. We need to be featured in series three, so let's bring this home and bring it to Bastrop and be able to really show off to the world how awesome we are. So to everybody that has helped, there is not enough gratitude to express our thanks. Please, please vote.
With that, I would like to extend my personal thanks, and I'm sure on behalf of counsel, Linda, to you and to the whole city staff for the tremendous amount of above and beyond work that you've done.
That's very much a team effort, so...
We're all on the same team. Mayor Protem Schiff?
I just want to say, you know, the, the event this morning, it was a lot of excitement. I never saw so many people packed. I wondered with the, our director of public safety if we were halfway legal this morning.
And the answer to that was, yes, we were.
But I got to say, after I got back, got to my office, I got on my computer, and I did my voting, and I contacted all three of my friends.
As long as they have more friends, we're, we're, we're all good.
One said, you know, they sent it out to 400 people, so...
There you go, there you go. Thank you so much. Counselwoman Brinnus?
Is the Terry Lynn Moore recording on a, on a link?
It is on the city's Facebook page and available to share. And DowntownBastrop.com.
Great, thanks.
Some of you may or may not realize, I was on the air with Bama Brown this morning, and I, we had come up with the idea of, "Oh, we'll, we'll get them to play Terry's song. Oh, there's this thing about copyright, la, la, la." So that's why it's on the city's website, and we have to be somewhat careful about it. But my, super thankful to Terry. She's just such an outstanding singer, and I thought it was very, very well done. Counsel, any, any other comments? Okay, thank you very, very much.
This is going to be Wesley.
Yes. So we're on 5C. If we're in the middle of the second page, receive presentation on the capital improvement program scoring criteria is provided in the comprehensive plan 2036. That's the comprehensive plan that was approved in November of 2016.
Thank you very much, mayor. Over the last several months, we've been spending a lot of time talking about the projects and programs that we have throughout the community and trying to find ways to incorporate all these projects into a feasible program as we move forward. And so we thought it would be a good time, moving into the budget season, to kind of get back in front of you, to show you the process that we're going through that was developed as we went through the comprehensive plan process, to kind of explain where the numbers are coming from and how the projects are being ranked, and how you'll see them when we're presenting them during the budget process. So just, mayor, you helped me a little bit with the recap. It was approved and adopted back in November of 2016. The comprehensive plan is, is our visionary policy document that helps us take all of the community goals and objectives and tie them all together and compare that to where we are today and what we need to do to get where we want to be. So it's, it was a great exercise, and we came out with a lot of good implementation actions that should help us as we, as we grow. One big aspect of the comp plan that we put a lot of effort into was making sure that we got a tremendous amount of community input. We spent a lot of time either through these different stakeholder interviews. We had 11 different meetings that were geared towards specific topics ranging from just general citizen issues all the way to the land development, I mean, emergency management issues, to try to get feedback from people who understand and, and work in that aspect of the community. We had over 2,500 survey responses going through our online and mailing surveys. We had a steering committee of, I think we started out with 25 people, and they helped guide the, the way the, the comp plan was set up. And we also had three different public open houses where we got input from the public in a, in an open house format. So one of the lesser-known areas of the comp plan, for those of you who made it this far, back to Appendix B, I'm very impressed, but this is kind of where I need you to have your seats in the upright position, because it's going to get a little nerdy as we go through this. But the Appendix B talks about the process that we went through to develop a template for collecting and describing and prioritizing all of the different projects that were listed as we went through the, the development process. When you look up the technical definition of a capital improvement program, it'll say the expensive stuff that needs to last a long time. And so it's a, a multi-year plan that identifies and prioritizes the projects that we need that mainly relate to the public facilities and services that we provide. And so Ms. Tracy, she's got some really good descriptions of what's considered a capital improvement, but you mainly see those with projects, with utility projects and parks and facilities. So the goals of a capital improvement program is to involve all the departments and collect as many aspects of the, the government or the community and the way it functions. You want it to be objective, and you want it to be data-driven. And so it, having a good CIP program allows you to, you know, take out the subjectivity and allow you to, to look at real numbers and, and really quantify the cost and the benefits of each project to know which ones you need to tackle first. It's also meant to be an annual process that's looked at as we go through the budget to see if anything needs to change or be, be incorporated that wasn't, that wasn't part of the plan the year before. And so as we went through this process, the goal of the template was to get an initial, an initial program put together so that we could present to you as counsel and give you something to start with. And that's what the purpose of this... And that's what the purpose of this presentation is to kind of show you what we've done so far and what we're planning on presenting to you during the, the budget process to make sure that you are, uh, on board with the approach that we're taking. And so we, we started out with this initial list of projects and we pulled projects from all the, the previous plans that we have done, the, the public input we received and the recommendations that we got from the consultant as we went through, went through the process. We then took all of those projects and divided them into four categories. There's facilities, quality of life, transportation, and utilities. We then took each of those projects and created a, oh, I'm sorry, uh, created a, uh, an information sheet that you'll, you'll see these, um, uh, very often as we go through our budgeting process. This is what we'll use as almost like a marketing sheet because it, it does a really good job of describing the project and, um, explaining what kind of revenue sources are available. It talks about how much the project costs and then allows us to kind of break out those costs over the years, uh, the budget years that that project would be implemented. And so after we had all those projects, when we get into the, the ranking of each project, we, we came up with 10 categories that are separated in two different groups. The community group would, uh, mainly pertain to projects that would be of community value. They're not really looking at necessarily the cost. You're looking mainly at the benefit of the project to the community. And the organizational goals, um, are the, the categories that kind of inject that reality into each project to, to know how they're impacted by other projects, how do we pay for it, can we even do the project, or if we can't now, what is it going to take to be able to do that project in the future? And so we then took those 10 categories and went through a ranking exercise to come up with the, uh, relative importance that each of those categories has, uh, in, uh, in relation to that, that group of goals or categories. And so we, we went through a process with the steering committee and internally to develop a ranking of, uh, from one to five, uh, within each, within each category. So each of the community goals were ranked one through five and each of the operational goals were ranked one through five. And so the, the scores were then taken, we, we then averaged those scores and then we used the, those rankings to come up with a, a weighting factor. And so the, the higher scoring criteria received a greater weight, ranking in that overall So we went through that, we, um, put together a weight that would be applied to the, to the, uh, to each criteria based on that level of importance. And this is the list of, of rankings. It starts out with the, um, the number one rank, which is public health and safety. And so you can see, because it's number one, it has a greater weight that's applied to the, to the score that that project receives based on that category. And so a, a project that has a higher score in the public health and safety category would be, uh, multiplied by this greater weight, which would then give it a, you know, a roughly higher score. And it, and it's ranked from public health and safety all the way down to environmental enhancement. And so we get a maximum or a minimum score and a maximum score based on the, uh, the scores within each category. Oh, I'm sorry, let me, when we went through and, and quantified those, those weights, we, we were pleased to see that the community goals and the organizational goals were roughly, uh, they, they accounted for roughly the same weight in that overall score. One concern we had was, we didn't want to have, um, projects that could never score high enough just because of the nature of the project. And so we were, we were happy to see that based on the, the distribution of these weightings that they were, you know, roughly equal. And so after we did all that, now, as far as where we are today, we need to, um, because those sheets were prepared, you know, back when we went through the comp plan process, which was almost two years ago, um, we need to go through and prepare new sheets for the new projects that have, that have, um, kind of come up as an opportunity, um, since the plan was adopted. We need to update the existing project sheets that we have, um, with newer cost estimates to, um, to be able to get a, a realistic look at the, the projects that we have.
At this point, I, I want to, um, interject something because, um, we're going to be, as Wesley says, bringing you a capital, uh, improvement plan, and we're going to bring a draft, if you will, at the April mid-year, uh, budget review. My interest in us taking time tonight to validate the committee is you are now responsible, not the committee. And the unintended consequence of having a great system like this is it may not give you the answer that you want. And so it's really important tonight that we take, um, time to make sure that without numbers, conceptually, um, this works, that you think public health and safety really is more important than quality of life, that's more important than the next, because, um, the next item, we're going to talk about a community-wide survey that we're going to engage the, um, citizens with and get them to, uh, participate in the projects that they would like to see included in this. Uh, we're going to bring you projects that the comprehensive plan have indicated are important. There's not going to be enough money to cover all of them. And so the way that you manage the process so, um, the community believes that it's fair comes from this objective slash subjective look. And when you pledge to have a process like this and you don't get the results you want and you begin to, um, tweak the process with numbers in front of you, then the community no longer believes in the integrity of the process. So it's awesome that the committee did this and I think they did great work, but they weren't elected to represent the people and they won't get to hear from the people when they don't get the answer that they like. So that's the reason that we're, um, really dialing down and I don't want to miss the point with, "Oh yeah, this looks great." This is going to be put to the test in April. It's going to be put to the test, um, when we ask you to adopt a budget. Um, so, um, as Wesley walks you through the process, I want to just put that front and center that this, this is going to have a life in about 90 days.
So just, just for clarification, what we're saying is, once you adopt the system, you bump them up against the projects and if your favorite pet project comes in on number nine, it is not in good standing to say, "Well, I just want you to move it to number one." And what we did when we did the transportation projects is, if you notice, if we collectively say, "Wait a minute, seven, eight, and nine really should be one, two, and three," you don't start picking apart the project, you go back and if you go to your previous list, you say, "Okay, well, the problem is, we think, uh, cost sharing should be higher than qual- you have to change the system or you might as well just throw darts at the target." Is that, am I?
Well said, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Jones, I think your light was on. Do you have any questions?
So, when we had our workshop and we talked about what was important, you're saying that that, once we adopt this, that that's, that's not going to be the case any longer?
Um, you, the list of priorities that you have given me doesn't change, but we're going to be bringing you drainage projects, streets projects, parks projects, water and sewer projects, and, and they will be competing for funding. And you might end up with $120 million worth of projects and $15 million worth of funding. So you have to have some way to assemble a capital improvement program and determine what's more important than the other. Not saying that none of them are important, but something's got to be first. This is how you would do it. So it, it doesn't change your list of priorities, it just ranks the capital aspects of this and where the money goes first relative to the infrastructure and the things outlined in the comp plan.
Because I would be so bold as to say, if the project doesn't meet one of our criterias of what we said, it, it won't be on the list anyway.
Right.
It's already met that hurdle, now you have more things over the hurdle than you have money to spread upon. Does that make sense? Mayor Proton Schiff, did you want to say anything? Okay, keep going Wesley.
Well, by having this set up and established going into it, it allows you to not focus so much on, you've already decided what's mostly important. At that point, you're just debating each score of the individual project. And so you're not debating whether or not public health and safety is, is the most important. You're just debating whether or not that project should receive a one or a five, you know, because you rank each project with each category between one through five. So are we headed in the right direction? So what, what I thought we could do is just go through each, um, each criteria and just show you the, the questions that were asked and the, the criteria that we looked at to determine which, um, how, how these ranks would, uh, would be categorized. So public health and safety came out as number one, and so we asked, you know, "Does the project directly impact the public health and safety of Bastrop residents? Or does it indirectly enhance the community-wide health or safety? Or does the project proactively mitigate a hazardous condition? Will it promote community resiliency in the event of a disaster?" Then number two was quality of life. We're mainly looking at ways to improve community aesthetics or, uh, improving our image. Does it support or enable the preservation of a cultural or natural resource? Does the project provide a greater citizen access to recreational opportunities?
One of the things that Wesley pointed out that I think is awesome in the committee work that came from this is so often, public health and safety is the overriding, uh, factor for anything. And quality of life falls somewhere around eight, nine, or 10, but it's the very things that your community has an interest in from a citizen perspective. So the great thing about this is that, number one, obviously, is public health and safety, but number two is quality of life. So to Wesley's point, your park projects and some of those touchy-feely things that, um, are critically important to families, but don't stack up against wastewater treatment because we've got to flush toilets. Now you've got something that you can begin to balance the two. So that really was, um, some of the great work that the committee put forward.
And there's been several projects that, um, I've been happy to see that they've been able to incorporate a lot of those different aspects. And so as we develop these programs, it'll help, um, those projects will definitely score better if we can incorporate more than one, um, category. So number three was economic development. Does the project promote the economic development in a new area of town? Does the project implement plans or policy documents that are endorsed by the city? Number four is cost sharing. Can we split this project? Are we getting funding from other sources? Um, is there, that this would help, you know, expedite a, a project that could be, um, funded through other sources?
The, the flip side of this one that's concerning is, we don't want to become guilty of escalating a project just because we can get funding for it. And so, um, I think sometimes we all get, you know, caught up in the fact, "Oh, there's a grant for that, we ought to get out there and do that." Well, that's great, but I think the thing that Wesley said is, is, was it a project that was already on the plan? And then will it score higher because we can help in the cost sharing versus finding a project, we can get cost sharing and putting it in the plan?
Because we found these, these grants are awesome, but they are a lot of work. They still have, usually have matching requirements associated with them. So this is Tracy's favorite, impact on operational budget. Um, this is when we're getting into reality and how we can pay for it. So will it, will it require additional personnel? Does it require additional maintenance to be budgeted in the future? Do we need new equipment? What kind of operational efficiencies could we expect from the project? Uh, and will the project generate revenue? Number six was leveraging. Um, this is when we're looking at how it can interrelate with another project. Can we build this in conjunction with another, another project to get a cost savings or a, a benefit?
One of the things that we'll be bringing to you in April is the, um, results of the pavement condition index, uh, study that was conducted. And so we have a map now of streets that are color-coordinated, much like a red light, green light, a traffic signal. And so one of the things that Curtis Hancock, who's our Assistant Director of, um, Public Works, is doing with the, um, water wastewater crews, is all of the streets that have been identified as red, um, his crew is going to go in and camera that infrastructure to determine whether or not it's in good shape. Because the worst thing we can do is fix a street and then dig it up two years later. That ruins the credibility of the organization. So, um, this was, would be one where you will see, um, us leveraging a water sewer project with a street project and doing them collectively so we do them one time.
So number seven was regulatory compliance. Do we have to do this project to meet some kind of regulatory issue that we're, uh, that we're dealing with? Number eight was community reinvestment. Does a project create, uh, reinvestment in a previously developed portion of Bastrop? Does the project support other public reinvestment activities? Or does it serve a, uh, or, does a traditionally underserved area benefit from the project? Number nine is land development and growth. Um, does the project support development of land uses that are recommended in one of our, one or more of our plans? Does it channel development activities to, uh, other recommended growth areas? And then number 10 was environmental enhancement. And we're looking for if it improves environmental conditions or, uh, abate an environmental hazard. And so last thing we did was, um, I've, I've kind of summarized the list. One point I wanted to make is, I, I put together a list of some of the projects that scored higher and some that scored lower. I did keep those in their, one of their four categories mainly because a lot of the funding mechanisms that are used to pay for these projects come from different buckets of money. And so I don't, it's, it's usually not, um, not common for you to, um, put some projects in competition with each other simply because of the funding mechanism that we use. We still score them according to the, the same process, but, uh, you know, for instance, utilities are normally paid for out of, out of funds that can't be used to pay for quality of life improvements. And so some of the quality of life, uh, projects that scored really high were the River Loop, um, Phase One of the River Loop, which we've actually been able to get funding for, I think, both phases. TechStots helping, um, pay for some of the, uh, pay for some of that project. Most of us know about this new wastewater plant that, that we need and the infrastructure that goes, uh, flows down to that new wastewater plant. Some of the projects that scored lower were, um, improvements at Mayfest Park, um, some of the utility improvements that would serve, um, outlying areas of town that were not anticipating a lot of growth over the next several years. And, and same for some of the transportation improvements. And so again, we feel really confident that the, that the rankings allow for good projects to score well, no matter what type of category they're in, but, um, we still wanted to make sure to get your feedback to make sure you thought we were heading on the right track.
I think it's appropriate that it's engineering week because you're a total nerd-dom, so.
We've got a lot of decimal points.
Lot, lots. I love it, it sings to my heart, but not to everyone's. Um, Council, any comments or questions for Mr. Brandon? Councilmember Innes?
Uh, I think it sounds like a wonderful plan. I'm afraid I'm going to have to sit down with you and understand the ranking, the criteria ranking a little bit as far as it's applied to projects. I, 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 I'm one of those guys that has to see it to understand. I'm one of those guys that has to see it to understand it, so. But I think it's supporting all the work you've done.
I think that's kind of the neat thing about it is once you get that initial ranking established, then you're looking at individual projects and you're getting into the details of that specific project and scoring it based on that ranking. So it allows you to apply numbers to something that can traditionally be tough to put numbers to.
I think that's your last slide. Am I right?
That's it. That's the last. Thanks. Hashtag my best.
Anybody, any other comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Brandon. Appreciate that. Counsel, we're now on 5D, Discuss Capital Improvement Plan, Community Survey.
Mayor and counsel, as I indicated, one of the things that really is critical every year is to engage the citizens relative to what they would like to see. Therefore, we are proposing that we would post a survey on the city's website starting March 1st, and it would be there until March 30th. And it's not a complicated survey. It's just going to ask really two questions, and that is, what is the capital need that the citizen believes is important? And then the next question is, why do you believe it's important? So that the community has an opportunity to engage in participating in these capital improvement projects. The parameters that I believe have been established for a project to be included in the capital plan is that it must cost more than $100,000 and have a lifespan of at least 10 years. Ongoing maintenance is not considered a CIP project, and we'll be addressing that in the future as a part of the maintenance aspects of the various budgets. The survey will be on the website. It will be available to be printed. Should people choose to just print it and handwrite it, they can mail it or drop it by to us. Citizens are going to be asked to provide their street address so that we are ensured that only Bastrop residents who ultimately pay for these projects are providing input. We certainly appreciate all of the people that live in our ETJ that come to Bastrop and use our services, but one of the benefits of living in the ETJ to them is they don't pay city taxes. So for those that do, they should have a seat at the table in determining what their taxes go for. So at this point in time, I'm asking for feedback on these questions. Are there other things you want to ask? Are you comfortable with this approach?
Counsel, any, Councilmember Jones?
So is there a mechanism in place that would present criteria that could be implemented that would raise the score of certain projects?
Case in point, like for example, Mayfield Park. And let's say, for example, I don't really want to give an example because it's too long and boring, but.
That is the question before y'all. What staff is going to do is we're going to receive the results of the survey, and we will put them in a spreadsheet, and we will rank them according to the information that we've been provided. And we will bring them to you in April. But as I like to say, I can engage, but I don't vote. And so at that point in time, it becomes your CIP, and y'all will have to then determine what y'all have an interest in.
Councilmember Ennis?
I don't see that it is a downside, and it certainly follows through with the council's desire to have better communications with the citizens of the city back and forth. And this will give us, give us more input on what they think is important, not just what we think is important.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yeah, how will we get the word out that this is available? Is it going to, can we include that in like the utility bill or something?
We will look at putting it in the utility bill. We will also do a public service announcement on our cable television. We will put it on social media. We will do everything that we know to do, including asking Andy to write an article about it. So again, the goal is to have everybody engaged. So we will certainly make all the effort possible.
We'll expect you to tell your three friends in town as well. Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Peterson, any comments? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, I think this is part and parcel of our initiative to have more open government, have open participation, as example, to our committees and boards. And I think this is vitally important simply because of the top three, the top high-scoring items on there involve community goals. And I think we need to emphasize that even more. So I think this is a great idea.
My only comment on the question of what is the capital need and why is it important is, we just need to make sure, if you walked up to Joe Citizen and said, what's the capital need, they're not all going to know what you're talking about. So, and I know that you'll put a little meat behind it, but we just, we need to be clear about the question we're asking them.
Yes, ma'am. And even with that, I suspect that the citizens will write down on that piece of paper what they want you to know. That's been my experience for a number of years. So we will provide that input back to you. Whatever we get will come to you in that workshop. But yes, ma'am, we'll give some examples, not to be leading, but to your point, to qualify what that looks like.
I appreciate that. When I first entered the business world, I thought all dollars were green and had pictures of dead presidents on them, and it's not the case at all. Okay, we are moving on. It's, we're two hours in. Would we like to take a quick five-minute break?
Why don't we get a minute?
Well, that's not the problem. You can't take care of the other. I'm sure you don't want to take care of the other. We're going to take a real quick five-minute break. We're in recess.
Of the January meeting, and this was a result of some process challenges that occurred relative to a development agreement. The board formed a committee that consisted of the Chair, Cam Chavez, Catherine Nash, and Ron Spencer. And essentially, their charge is to review, update, and establish policies. And the end game of this is to better define roles of the corporation, board members, and staff, so that the process exists to offer clarification going forward. The mayor did quite a bit of research in order to prepare for the conversations, and because I'm kind of a resource for her, we spent some time looking at the legislation that creates a 4A, 4B company. Well, there's a lot of language in that that gives board their authority, but it doesn't show up in the bylaws. It doesn't show up in the policies and procedures. And if you don't know, to go back to the establishing legislation by the state, it can create some ambiguity. So the charge of this committee is to clear that up and to create some good policies and procedures. And that is what that committee's going to do. I'm not in a position to present the updates on the project sales tax and agreements and things like that. So we'll ask Sean to catch everybody up next meeting. But Sarah is going to talk to us about the 2018 launch of the small business workshops and luncheon.
I think this is so exciting and kind of poetic, but for the second year in a row, the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Main Street Program are hosting their annual launch Small Business Development Workshop. And it happens to be on Tuesday, February 27. Doesn't that just mean something to everybody? Okay, sorry. It is a free workshop that the EDC graciously provides to our community. I am super impressed with the hard work that Angela Ryan, and Jean Reiman Schneider, and Kathy Maryfield have put in to securing all of the speakers. So it's free. You can register online. Go to bastropedc.org or bastropchamberofcommerce.com. We've got information on dues and debts of business planning, financial planning. Alicia Cook with Opportunity Strategies will keynote lunch about Eight Secrets from a Secret Shopper. She's actually one of the ones that participated in the secret shopper assessment that Vicki's team did last year, so she's intimately familiar with downtown Bastrop. Trey, and Wesley, and Dave Gaddis are going to be there to help our small business owners and entrepreneurs who would like to open up businesses in Bastrop, talk about how to navigate and work with the city, and then accounting tips and one-on-ones with the experts. So it's going to be a lot of fun. There may be some schedule changes last minute, depending on the change in the council meeting. But we want all of the small businesses to come to the workshop, learn all that they can, and then hopefully join us at a celebration victory party that evening when we see Amanda Brinkman and not Cameron Potts. But Ty Pennington could come too, right? Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Okay, we are at Citizen Comments, and I have, Ms. Chavez, do we have any other peoples? Okay, I have one from Stephen Beard. Mr. Beard?
Thank you. I appreciate you indulging me. My name is Steve Beard. I live in Waco, Texas, at 5408 Pointwood Circle, 76710. I am a Vice President and the Controlling Member of Pine Forest Investments Group, LLC. I have, before we leave here tonight, I want each of you to have a copy of a settlement agreement that was proposed last June of '17. I know we're not here to discuss, I'm not asking you to discuss, et cetera. I understand the rules of the game as that is related. I've heard some of you have had copies, some of you haven't, but it's a very simple three-page document. It's not long, it's not involved, and I want you to have it. I want you to visit in your executive session, I want you to visit with your counsel and see if there's not some way to get this thing wrapped up. We want to buy the lots. We want to develop the lots. We want to increase the tax base. I heard a moment ago, you expect a $1.8 million deficit in sales taxes within the next five years. Clearly, to get this ball rolling and out of the courthouses is an opportunity. One important part of the settlement that I'm not sure everyone has heard, but that I want you to know about, and that is Pine Forest will pay up to an additional $1.2 million, $1,210,000 to be exact, over and above the purchase price, as agreed upon in the original documents of 2013. That amount of money, again, gossip has it, I guess we could tie it down, but you all spent in excess of $1 million in legal fees fooling with this thing the last five years. The lawsuit was filed in June of 2013. This is a way to get all that back. We all start over, we don't look back, we pop a line in the sand and go forward. I think it's an opportunity to take advantage of a situation that I do not know the result of, but this case on appeal was argued November the 15th of this past year at the Third Court of Appeals in Austin. A ruling is expected, I won't say any day, but certainly any week, perhaps any month. There are cases that should take 15 minutes to rule on, that they take longer. There are cases that take less. If any part of that ruling is in favor of Pine Forest, it will mean a new trial, and the million one that I just mentioned comes off the table. We're not going to pay if we win. Let's get this thing settled. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beard. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a, hang on, just one second, Mr. Johnson? Okay, I didn't know if I was supposed to call you before executive session or not, but she's saying, come on now. Mr. Glenn Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, Manager, Counsel, City Attorney. Today is Shrove Tuesday, as my Cajun friends say, it's Fat Tuesday. I brought a king cake for the council so that you can celebrate. Right now, across the world, but mostly in New Orleans and in Brazil, at Carnival and Mardi Gras, people are celebrating their life before Lent starts on Valentine's Day, believe it or not, on Ash Wednesday. As I came in this evening, I asked Chief Adcock if he was, felt blessed that he was not a member of the New Orleans Police Department. He assured me he was. There's also a secondary reason. I hope that you would have a sweet taste in your mouth to deal with the sour issue of the Van Diver settlement. I live at 1109 Pecan Street, two doors down from the Van Diver property. I don't know what the settlement provides. I've not got a copy of it. I've asked for a copy just recently. I do know from public records or public comments that the city paid $50,000 on a $150,000 settlement fee, has paved the street on Jefferson for the length of the Van Diver lot. And in return, there's been no improvement on the violations of the building. It's become a public nuisance. It probably violates all the public nuisance ordinances under Section 6.04. You've been rewarded by scurrilous signs in the building that someone apparently convinced the owner to take down. You've heard the question of the fairness of the settlement that was agreed to. I disagree with the settlement, and I was chastised by a former city attorney for saying it wasn't a good settlement. But 10 months later, we're still dealing with a derelict building, a property that's not being kept up. I'm told that, I think they mowed the front yard, but the backyard still has weeds that qualify as a nuisance under the city ordinance. So I don't know what you're going to be talking about today about the settlement, but here's a cake to sweeten the task that you have in the closed session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Okay. Mayor Protem Schiff's happy because we're pretty much on the last page. We're on the consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, and the reason that the city secretary's not here is she has also been banned from City Hall because she has a fever. And so I'll go ahead and read it for you, Tracy, so you don't have to worry about it since there's only one item. Consider action to approve city council minutes from January 18th, Joint Council, Parks and Advisory Board Meeting, January 18th, Joint Council and Fairview Cemetery Advisory Board Meeting, and January 23rd, 2018, Regular Meeting. Anybody feel like a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Nelson?
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion about any of the meeting minutes?
I just wanted to bring up one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's for the board to understand, there was some concern on the council about changing or loosening some of the restrictions so that there could be more diversity. And I think that on the part of the two, of, I know at least one of the council members, there was a misunderstanding of exactly what that consisted of. And so I think it's really important for the committee to understand that the council really does support loosening up those restrictions. It doesn't mean you can't build a lattice arbor over your grave. You know what I mean? There was some confusion as to what that would entail if we loosened up the restrictions. So.
So do you want to amend the meeting minutes?
No. You just said if you wanted to have some discussion.
Yeah, and that's fine.
I just wanted to throw that out there, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. Ms. Chavez, if you, do you want to call the roll? You want me to? Okay, go ahead. You're on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
And Councilmember Jones?
Yes. Thank you, the consent agenda is proved unanimously. We're now moving on to items for individual consideration. I'm at 9A. We're going to hold a public hearing and consider action to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2018-02 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit to allow mini warehouse use for Lot 1 of the BECC, NHP, and Procop Subdivision, Section 2, located at 510 West State Highway 71, within the city limits of Bastrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, setting out conditions, repealing conflicting provisions, providing a severability clause, and establishing an effective date, and move to include on the February 27th agenda for a second reading. Ms. Bills?
Good evening. The request before us tonight is a conditional use permit to allow, what is in our code, considered a mini warehouse use, which is mini storage, which is individual storage units for rent to individuals for the sole purpose of storage, no retail sales or anything like that going on. Specifically, the applicant has requested a two-story, 97,200 square foot mini storage facility. This was the rendering that was provided in their application and shown to P&amp;Z. They have sent us some new ones that I'll get to. The site at 510 SH 71 is on the south side of 71. It would be a 48,800 square foot building footprint. So the second story would cover most of the first story, but not be a complete second story. 14 parking spaces will be provided, which is required by our code, and there is currently a billboard on the site that is, plans to remain. From an overall perspective, the lot is this crosshatched lot, and it's part of the BECC, NHP, Procop subdivision, which is outlined in the blue, this larger area. The surrounding area, you have the new 24-hour ER that's going in next to the Wendy's, and the other side you have the car wash. Currently, these other lots where the extension of Agnes Street is coming through are vacant. Future land use for this site is general commercial, and the zoning, base zoning district for this is C2 Commercial 2, which is our highest intensity commercial district. In the area, you have the Pecan Park Plan Development to the west, and then other C2 uses around the property. Public comment was received, we sent out seven notifications to the property owners in the 200-foot area. One had no objection, and one was opposed, and their basis was that it did not provide a retail use similar to the other uses in the area. All of our conditional use permits have these five main criteria, one that the use is harmonious and compatible with the surrounding existing uses. For this, the surrounding uses are mainly retail and service oriented, and this would also fall in that same vein. The activities requested by the applicant are normally associated with the permitted use in the base district, and this is our highest intensity commercial base district. After this, you would go, you would look at an industrial zoning district, which is the only zoning that the mini warehouse use is allowed in by right. The nature of the use is reasonable, the size and scale are generally in line with what's the surrounding area has, and there was no negative impact that staff could see on the surrounding properties. And also, the last condition is that any conditions be provided to maintain the intent of the base zoning district. Staff analyzed that the CUP met all the basic requirements. One thing that it did not strictly comply with is our future land use plan. It does state that the commercial, general commercial land use does recommend uses with heavier traffic and a need for high visibility, and your mini warehouse uses are fairly low traffic and do not have that need for high visibility, usually know where you're going to store your stuff. The use is compatible with the C2 base zoning district, and then this use from an economic and retail perspective may not be the best use for this site. As one of the neighbors kind of pointed out, it's, it doesn't provide a lot of synergy with the other retail uses on either side, the restaurant or the car wash. And then city council does have the ability to add additional conditions that would mitigate any negative impacts that you see that would be caused by this mini storage facility in this area. There are four standard conditions that all CUPs have to meet, that they must meet all of our city regulations, they have to get all their permits before they can occupy the building, building permits have to be secured within one year of getting the CUP, and you can't change anything on the site without coming back and modifying the CUP. No additional conditions were proposed by staff. The Planning and Zoning Commission heard this at their January 25th meeting. Some of their concerns were with the appearance of the building that was provided in the rendering. They were not real fond of the bright red of the building. This site will have to meet all of our exterior building materials, which require 100% masonry on the front and 50% masonry on the sides and rear. They also had some questions about the driveway access on if it was adequate to serve truck traffic, and the driveway will be reviewed during the site plan process to make sure that all the necessary infrastructure's there to manage trucks. Since that meeting, the applicant provided, actually this morning, these additional conceptual renderings of what they, what is more in line with their intention to provide at this site. The colors are not as bright and a little more stone, and the bays on the facility, they cannot face the street, our code does say that, so the bays, the exterior bays for the storage will be accessed from the exterior, will be facing the 24-hour ER to the west. The rest of the storage will be accessed from interior corridors. That's just another kind of view. The council has the ability to approve this CUP, the ability to deny based on the code requirements that I quoted, and then, but you also have the option of sending this back to P&amp;Z for further review and further analysis of the site, the conditions. They can review some, how the exterior design, lighting or landscaping, what needs to be installed to possibly mitigate against the surrounding properties. Questions?
Council, any questions for Ms. Bills before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Ennis?
All right. If, in your, you said the surrounding uses are a mix of small, a small-scale retail, medical, and restaurant. So you're saying that a storage unit is retail?
In this situation, yes, because they're rented out to individual customers. It's not a commercial store, a warehouse storage as in one person is storing things. It will be tenants that each rent a space that will come and go. So they're fairly, they're various sizes of storage spaces. And the applicant is here if you have specific questions on their sales model.
Any other questions for Ms. Bills before? Councilmember Nelson?
Has any detrimental effect to the surrounding business been identified by the tenants? I know there's one objection. Did he have any indicator, or they have any indicators, any kind of detrimental effect that they feel that this property would have on their business?
They felt that the use should be something more in line with a commercial retail such as a restaurant, or a different sales or service use rather than mini storage.
But no identifiable detrimental effect?
No, specifically, no.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Is it all right if I talk about that meeting? Because I was at the meeting, I'm the liaison for the planning and zoning, and I think that the Planning and Zoning Committee did a really good job, asking questions, trying to identify the best way to move forward, and their biggest issue was just the overall design. And I know that you all said you had several other buildings that you've built in other communities, and so two ways we can move forward. Well, I guess there's three, but if you're open to maybe submitting those designs to the council so that we can maybe collaborate with you, or we can pass that on to planning, or pass that back to planning and zoning and let you collaborate with them and bring it back to us, you know, what do you all think? Just so that, I mean, I don't know that this is the best use of our time to sit here and kind of talk about landscape and design and so forth, or maybe you all liked what they submitted, but I just wonder if it's maybe something we should allow you to work with planning and zoning, or, I mean, do you all have any ideas about how the best way to move forward with that, with this would be?
This is first reading, so we can still go back and look at this again before we, before final approval.
So maybe I should ask our attorney and our city manager, just, you know, I really liked what you submitted tonight, a lot better than what I saw last week.
I think before the decision is made that we don't like it, there needs to be some discussion about it, because in order for planning and zoning to do different, they're going to have to have some pretty clear direction about what you do and don't like, about what's been presented, so they know what to do with the direction they get to send back to you something else.
The one thing, though, is that we're seeing something that P&amp;Z did not see.
That's the point, yeah.
And did not have an opportunity to discuss.
That is correct, but they voted to approve. Didn't it come with the recommendation of approval?
They did.
So going back on, I think the issue is they didn't like the red, I think the applicant heard it, and they brought it to you. Had P&amp;Z denied that, and they brought you a new something, then I think you would send that back to planning and zoning, but I think when we go back and ask them to, to change something they have approved, it needs to go with pretty clear direction.
If we approve this on first reading, does that hold the owner to using the design scheme that's been presented today?
If you include that as a condition, yes.
Okay.
So as part of the condition, could we just, and maybe you all like that, maybe everybody agrees that that's the best one, but I personally would just like to see maybe, I know you said you had some stuff you did in Spice Wood, I think, and over in Lakeway, I can't, now I can't exactly remember, but you had, yeah, if you would come up and talk about that.
Yes, absolutely, if the applicant's in the room, please come forward, and I'd appreciate if you'd state your name, so we know who you are.
My name, my name is Matt Mathias, and I am here with my partners and our engineer, who we should honor again, who's come up with the site plan. I think there's a couple of issues here that need to be addressed. Yes, we have done, we have done facilities in other communities, Lakeway on Loop 360 in the Westlake Hills area, most recently in Terra Vista and Round Rock, all which are highly architecturally regulated areas. So our projects don't tend to look like what other storage facilities do. And sitting in this room, I would, I would encourage you to turn around and look at the wall, both the finished wall and the stone wall behind you. If you like that wall, you will like the rendering that you've seen tonight. It's, this is where the design came from. It's native stones and the look, and that's, we heard the one commissioner that brought up the color. It was not the entire commission, one commissioner brought up the color before the vote, which was unanimous to support us. But yes, we try to fit in with the communities where we are, and I don't know if you can go back to that rendering, but from the first one, there you go. It's basically the same type of stone that you see behind you, and the same colors you see on the walls in this room, to try to mesh with the, with your community. That's our attempt.
So I guess what I'm saying, I mean, and clearly, if, you know, that's really the only control we can exercise over this, is over maybe the way it looks, but I'm not saying there's anything wrong with what you've submitted, I'm just pointing that out to the council, that, you know, that if you want to tweak that a little bit, you know, we can, but we're going to have to put that in, you know, make that clear tonight, you know, if there's something, but if you like it, then we're good to go.
Does council want to make any, we do, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we still have to have a public hearing. I don't know if anyone's signed up for it, but I still have to open and close a public hearing, so we're not, I'm not quite to that point, because I want to make sure the public has all of the information before they, we ask them to speak. Ms. Bills, anything else that you're...
Our site planning process does not have any strict design controls, other than exterior building materials must be of certain materials. We don't have color controls or any articulation requirements in our current code. So if you want to have additional criteria to make this fit with the area, then you would need to put it in a condition.
So I would, I don't get to vote, but I get to comment. There has been discussion about whether or not this is highest and best use, and that's a subjective thing, and, you know, all things being equal, the bottom line is, if we had wanted it to be different, P&amp;Z can't read our minds, nor can a landowner, and I think that sometimes when you make rules, you have to live with, live with people following those rules. And so for me personally, it may not be exactly what would be my number one choice, but when you meet all of the criteria, and Councilmember Jones, you're indicating that there's been cooperation from a P&amp;Z meeting to council meeting, it's hard to say, yeah, but I just kind of would rather not have that. What it does mean to me, Ms. Bills, is I think it increases the importance of planning and zoning, to really take a hard look at our land use, to take a look at our ordinances, and to understand that when we write the rules, then people follow the rules. So that, I just want to make sure that the baby doesn't get thrown out with the bathwater, and that we are having clairvoyant expectations of people, where we didn't really tell them what we wanted, but they didn't do what we thought we hadn't told them, and you get what I'm saying on that. So that's my comment on that. Any other comments before I open a public hearing? So I am officially opening the public hearing. Ms. Chavez, do we have anyone signed up to? Is there anyone in the audience? Don't leave the room and talk about us behind our back. If you have something to say, say it now. With the applicant, the applicant or the engineer, do you have anything else that you'd like to add? Just please say your name.
Absolutely. Brendan MacIntyre, engineer with Carlson, Brigantin, During. Just like to point out a couple things. Number one, from what we're here to request, we're here to request the CUP, this is not a variance, this is not a zoning change. The way your zoning code is written, the only base zoning that allows this use is light industry. The only uses that allow this, even with a conditional use, would be in a PUD, where it would be site-specific, or in C2 zoning. So to be clear, this is just a fundamental requirement that's set forward in your development code, unless you're in a light industry. And I do want to point out that we're talking a lot about base zoning, and if this is appropriate for the base zoning. Your C2 base zoning is a central and convenient location for small-scale service and commercial-related establishments such as wholesale products, welding shops, flea markets, major automotive repair, upholstery shops, and other heavy commercial users. I don't think that this use is inconsistent with the base zoning. I think that the developer, certainly from a planning and zoning standpoint, I agree, this is an example of how a project should, should go through. As shareholders, the developer came, we did hear the concerns that were articulated from the Planning Commission. They did vote unanimously to progress it forward to the council. That rendering is a more Texas hill country look, and from a zoning standpoint, we certainly do think that this complies, and we would ask for you to consider this, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. MacIntyre. Are there any other comments? I'm officially closing the public hearing. Did I matter?
Would appreciate the city attorney weighing in on Jennifer's comment that at a site plan review, that there are no design standards or articulation requirements, so if council is fine with that, when they make a motion, should they specify that as a condition of the CUP, so when it's built, they get that? Or how should that be handled?
Yes, Mayor and Council, in particular rendering, those architectural exterior designs are not part of the application and not part of P&amp;Z's recommendation. And so if your approval of this conditional use permit tonight is tied to that rendering, then the motion would be to approve... then the motion would be to approve the conditional use permit with consistency with that rendering being part of the approval.
Does that rendering have any other name besides that rendering? Is it February 13th or something?
Sure, there's a page number and it was submitted today.
Oh, page number. Well, it's not in our packet, so I don't have a page number.
If I could address it again. Again, Brendan MacIntyre, CBD. One of the issues that we run into is we are very early in the project. So this is a conditional use, so this is a preliminary rendering. That is not a final building. That building has not been designed. This is a general representation of the design intent. So I do want to be careful that that is not a final representation. This is an illustrative representation of what I would consider a hill country look. So some stone and tan. So I do want to be careful to not tie it into that building, because the plans have not advanced to that point where we have any confidence that that is the exact building. So what I would ask is that, you know, I think there's some room to get through here where we could agree to have a hill country look with, you know, we can talk some about verbiage, and we would ask that it be something that staff, that it be deferred to its staff, without having to go back to planning and zoning, without having to come back to the council with final renderings.
Ah, you want your king cake and eat it too.
No, I don't, no, no, I don't. What I don't want to do is just have a very laborious process. And as Councilmember Jones said, that's not necessarily the intent, as I see as the city council, to improve landscape plans, renderings and building articulations. That is a waste of this resource. So I think that I would ask that we find some way to, where the council feels confident that you're getting a rendering that's not the red, and that has the color scheme and the rock scheme that you're looking for. But there does have to be some flexibility as we work through the design process.
So let me ask you a different question.
Yes, ma'am.
What's on that picture that you're worried about you can't deliver?
Nothing, except I don't know that the building's going to, this shows a 20-foot-tall building with a 35-foot-tall tower element. It shows exterior doors on the west elevation and 100% masonry on the north. We can, that concept, I don't have a problem with. As an engineer, is that building going to be what's going to be built? I don't know that that exact building is going to be built. So I'm just saying, that is not a final rendering. That is a preliminary.
Okay. It's the engineer in you saying, if you take a picture, it may not look exactly like that. It may not have the same number of bays or whatever.
I have never designed a project that has been built 100% in accordance with my plans. Yes, ma'am.
I feel like you're wanting to say something, Mayor Protem Schiff.
Yeah. My thought was, I kind of throw this over to the attorney. I mean, can we approve this conditional use permit with the direction that this general scheme is what would be used, and that our city engineer would determine the compatibility of their final design with what we see on the screen?
Yes, I mean, it's labeled a conceptual rendering. I think that's pretty clear what it is. I think if they turn in plans that are consistent with this, the chances of staff approving it and moving it through the system are very high. I think if they come back with something that is not at all consistent with this, no effort to achieve some sort of substantial compliance with the design, chances are staff's not going to approve it, and will be forced to go back through the process at that point in time. So I think there's no need to go back to P&amp;Z or the city council if what they actually come back with from their architect and engineer looks kind of like that.
Trying to be sensitive to the fact that it's not a final drawing, but particularly if this goes on the consent agenda, it's the final time we're going to talk about it, and so we need to be clear to staff, is, was really my point. Councilmember Ennis, you have your mic on.
As I'm understanding it, what we're talking about here is design as opposed to, say, footprint. You don't want us to hold you to that many doors down the side, and you don't want us to make you adhere to which side that tower's going to be on. But essentially, can you agree that that basic design is what you're going to use?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think from a staff perspective, what I would be interested in hearing is that hill country look is defined as this kind of stone, taupe, color, and the articulation is that there not going to be any doors facing Highway 71. If there's any other thing about that that's important, I think you need to give staff direction. If it looks similar to that, we'll be fine with it. If it doesn't look similar to that, and that's the instructions you've given me, you will be seeing it again.
So I would strongly encourage that whichever council member, at whatever time, decides to make a motion, that you make a motion with clarity, so that staff and the owner know how to get through the maze. It's not fair to hide the needle in the haystack. Any other comments? Councilmember Jones?
No, I think that, I think that you did a pretty good job addressing the main concern of planning and zoning. They did a really good job of, you know, bringing it to this point. So I move that we approve the project with the expectation that this rendering that is presented to us has that, what I call it, Bastrop stone, but, you know, and the taupe that you're calling the hill country look, but that you're going to work with planning, not with the, not planning and zoning, but the...
Planning department.
Planning department. Okay? So that's the motion.
What about articulation, that there will not be any doors facing 71?
That's already part of the permit, so I don't think that's...
Yeah. All righty, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Jones. I have a second from Councilmember Peterson. Is there any further discussion, counsel? Seeing none, Ms. Chavez, if you'd like to call the roll?
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember, sorry, Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. That's approved unanimously, and we'll see that on the consent agenda on the 27th. And as always, consent items can be pulled if something comes up between now and then. Thank you very much. We're now moving, everything else okay? We're moving on to 9B. Consider action to approve resolution 2018-09 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, providing for the bylaws of the Youth Advisory Council as attached in Exhibit A, providing for a repealing clause, and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First off, I received an email from Ms. Brandon this morning, and a lot of the kids have an English paper that's due for a major grade in the morning, so you're going to have to deal with just me and not get to look at all those smiling faces. So on January the 9th, we passed an ordinance establishing the, establishing the Youth Advisory Council. And ever since that time, they've been working tirelessly to develop these bylaws. So what we're going to ask for tonight is just approval of the resolution to approve the bylaws and let them move forward and turn in their applications. Right now, they'll take them to mid-April. The deadline is April 13th. Hopefully by the May council meeting, they'll be back with their first board to present to you.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Jobe?
Move to approve resolution R2018-09.
I have a motion approved from Councilmember Nelson, and a second from Mayor Protem Schiff. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Chavez, if you call the roll?
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. That's a unanimous approval. I'm on item 9C. Consider action to approve resolution R2018-10 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, confirming the appointment by the mayor to the zoning board of adjustments as required in Section 3.08 of the city's charter as outlined in Exhibit A and establishing an effective date. And you've grown to love my presentations about this, as we try to keep our boards and commissions full. You will remember that, I guess it was on January 23rd, was it, when Mr. Gaddis explained to us the importance of having the alternate for the zoning board of adjustment, because people are certainly entitled to have five people hear them. Although they can make a quorum without an alternate, it then requires them to have a unanimous approval and puts an undue burden on anyone that would be coming before them. Thankfully, Pablo Serna, who was here earlier and was, is very excited about being on the Board of Adjustments. He's self-employed, he's familiar with both Form-based code and planning and zoning regulations. He was a member of the Vision Task Force. He lives downtown, and his term would end in 2019. I would very much like to appoint him to alternate number one. The, it brings the total of appointments until we make the next round of appointments to 50. And thankfully, with a guy, we're now, we've got mails up to 42%. 66% of the appointments have never served on a board, 44% downtown, 40% other than downtown, and 16% in the ETJ. Those numbers have stayed pretty consistent. I'm pretty proud of that representation. I respectfully request approval.
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jones, and a second from Mayor Protem Schiff. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Chavez, if you'll call the roll?
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. I very much approve the unanimous approval of 9C. Consider action to approve resolution number R2018-11 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, appointing a person as the City of Bastrop's Clean Air Coalition representative as required in Article 2 of the Clean Air Coalition and the Capital Area Council of Government bylaws and establishing an effective date. Here's the deal. I deterred the package in on February 3rd. There was a requirement that we need to appoint someone to the Clean Air Board. And I was not able to confirm a conversation, but I will offer to counsel that if no one else wants to do it, I am absolutely willing to do it. But there is a person among us, who is Councilmember Nelson, who is not only qualified to do it, he has served on this board before, and he has agreed to serve and represent the City of Bastrop. Isn't that correct, Councilmember Nelson?
Yes, ma'am. Move that we...
A second. I have a motion from Mayor Protem Schiff that Councilmember Nelson be appointed to be...
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Yes.
I'm sorry, sir, that's too late. Ms. Chavez, if you please call the roll.
Mayor Protem Schiff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Nelson, and the voluntolding was very much appreciated. In all seriousness, he is very qualified to do it, and it's awesome to have somebody serve on that, representing the city that's familiar with it. And I appreciate the extra effort that that takes. All right, we are, it is 9:23, and we will be going into executive session. We're going to discuss two items. 10A, City Council shall convene and to close executive session pursuant to Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code to discuss the purchase of four pieces of property in and around the downtown area. And item 10B, City Council shall convene into the closed executive session pursuant to 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to discuss and deliberate litigation matters with the city attorney regarding the City of Bastrop versus Van Diver. We are now in executive session. It's 9:24. Thompson, the only action we have out of executive session is counsel thoroughly enjoy the king's cake. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. But nobody got, there's a piece left, nobody got the baby. So we're going to make Chief Adcock have it, so he gets the baby and he has to host the party next year. All right, Mayor Protem Schiff?
I move to adjournment.
I have a motion to adjourn in a second, and by acclamation, it is 10:26, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.